Well, welcome. It's that time of year again. How do we say we're going to spend $100 million? When we grew up, you could have bought Milford for less than $100 million. They would have thrown in Hope Dale and Mendon on top of it. But before we go through tonight, we're going to, before we go through all the articles that town meeting will be considering, let's have some introductions.
Hi, Al. Will Kincaid, Chairman of the Milford Board of Selectmen.
Chris Moore, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Mike Soares, Member of the Finance Committee.
Do we feel like under, you know, they're Chairman, Chairman, and then just us? But you have notoriety with articles coming, so.
Sure.
Let's go. Article one basically gives a chance for everybody that wants to present, to present reports. I mean, nothing new, nothing surprising. You'll give Finance and any other specific committee Chairman that want to talk will give their reports.
Yeah, and it's usually just, it obviously was the Finance Committee and the CIC for years and years, but obviously since they've been disbanded, it's just the Finance Committee that usually gives the report at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, and you'll be doing the CIC.
Pretty much, yeah.
You'll be doing the Capitol. Okay, number two, we talk about wage and salaries, the schedule. Nothing exciting this year, right?
No, all the excitement was last year, obviously, with the redesign of Article two and how it dealt with pay for the employees. So this year, really, nothing exciting about it is, right?
Yeah, so the same, we're using the same chart, but the numbers are the same. The only thing that changes really is that the people who already maxed out get an additional 1 percent. Otherwise, people just get their step increase.
Yep.
Which is different from how we've done things in the years past.
Well, I mean, that took the salary base that we had up, what, $100 grand this, last year?
It was a jump last year.
So it was a pretty heavy jump last year, so you wouldn't, you'd hope, wouldn't be another $100 grand jump this year. Article three, again, I don't see anything new and exciting there. There are 1 percent increases for all the elected officers.
Yep, and we were in favor for this.
Again, so Finance Committee. Article four, Chris, this is yours.
Article four is really where all the spending happens. That's all the budgets in town that we go through. And as a Finance Committee, we go through each budget individually. I mean, people think that, you know, we look at it as a bulk. No, we actually vote to accept every single budget in town, and we look at every single one of them. We scrutinize them. We look at the percentage increase. We had a 2 percent recommendation to our departments. A great many of them met that 2 percent obligation. Any departments that didn't, we had before us for explanations. In most departments, the 2 percent really is, you know, more of a guideline, but they have salaries they need to meet with contracts and one-time expenses they came in. And each of the departments gave a defense for what they were, and we accepted all the departments' budgets, and we voted favorably on Article four.
About $98 million direct?
Yeah, it was about $99 million now. Yep.
Al, if I can just add, I think the most important thing that Chris just mentioned was the fact of all of the debate and scrutinization that happens prior to town meeting. Been a town meeting member since I was 18 years old, and people for years were always saying by the time it got to you guys, and you hear favorable, far more, far more many times than unfavorable from the table in the FinCom. And I think now with you guys being on television and your subcommittee even meetings, that can be televised, I think people are finally seeing over the last few years that there's not only a lot of work, and I don't think people ever doubted the amount of work you folks did, but I think they didn't know because they never saw it or experienced, the actual debate and questions and answers and the investigating and, I mean, you guys aren't always, I always have told people, and I only sat on the FinCom for two years, but I always said, when someone comes before you and there's 15 folks rifling questions at you, all having opinions, it's, you know, it's, it can be a tough environment and, you know, it's a lot of work for you guys.
It's always interesting, thank you, because, you know, people say, okay, you've got $100 million budget. 70, 80 of it goes in 30 minutes, and then we have an article on chickens and we spend an hour.
Right.
You know, or an article, I mean, one of our members, Mike Sciavi, brought up that we spent in full committee this year, an entire meeting talking about school committee budget.
It was huge.
And that's not counting how many subcommittee meetings?
And for once of this year, we started televising those subcommittee meetings. And that way, the public could see how much back and forth there is and how lively the debate can get. I mean, every, at the end of those meetings, I made sure to shake every single school committee's hands because sometimes you, those can get heated and the debate can get a little out of hand, but at the end of the day, we all know that, you know, everyone's trying to do what's best for the town.
Well, I mean, you started with, what, $1.7 million variance between what the FinCom said was acceptable and what the school did. And last night, we talked about the last $150,000.
Yep.
Or the last $300,000, and we end up splitting it. And I always get a kick, it's like a lawyer's agreement. No side admitted that they were wrong, but we're $300,000 apart.
No, I got to tell you, and just witnessing that, and that's the main reason that I wanted to attend, just as an observer, because I know for the nine years that I served on the school committee, we didn't necessarily, I think, have the, maybe, the level of debate that you folks experienced this past year. But it was always, it was always heated, and in the end, I think everyone's got to feel that they, you know, they're getting their questions answered and/or making a justification. But at the same time, just like Mike said about shaking hands at the end of it, this stuff can get very personal. People who say it's politics, it's not personal, once you experience it, it often gets personal. We've all been there, we've all been in those heated debates and arguments because we're all trying to do what we think is best. But nine years, you gentlemen and Joyce were very tough, but we always got what was best for the kids, and we always were able to work something out. But believe me, we had our debates, we puffed out our chests at times, and we got frustrated and, you know.
Absolutely.
And I just want to tell you, Chris, you did an amazing job last night of just managing that meeting and just keeping everyone in check.
I got the bruised ankles as he kicked me.
And it's, and to Will's point, it's, you know, when you're dealing with an entire town and all these different departments, you know, and you have to tell police no this year because you're going to say yes to highway, of course you feel bad you're saying bad to police. Is what they're trying to do good? Of course it is, but you have to prioritize, you have to pick. And unfortunately, you know, between the Selectmen and the Finance Committee, we have to pick things. You know, we can't do everything. I'd love to do everything, but you, no one would be able to afford to live in our town.
Well, look what we did to poor Paul Mazakelli in the Board of Health.
Yeah, I know.
$30,000 because he's got to get rid of leaves.
Yep.
And we said, go get Scotty in his new fancy truck and his new people.
Yeah.
To haul him because that's 30 grand we can use to save the chickens or something else.
But you know, and that's how detailed we get. I mean, we will fight over $30,000 if we feel like we can save $30,000. In a $100 million budget, that might seem insignificant, but that is $30,000 we're not spending.
Well, you know, again, you're down to, that's $30,000, maybe $3.5. You may say that's nothing, but that couple of those $3.5 and some of the people who built Milford, who live on fixed income, may not get dinner.
And I think that's the principles that a lot of us stand by and the, and in the end, and even during this whole, this whole season, just hearing people that have contacted me and said, hey, you know, well, the FinCom and some moms were reaching out to us over what they were being told or hearing about the school department and FinCom, and the FinCom are appointed by you guys and that type of thing. But in the end, I always said, look, folks, this has worked for, way before I was alive and way before you were alive, this process has worked. And I think you have to just follow through. There's all gentlemen and a lady sitting on that, and they're good people. And I think that that's got to be the bottom line. I used to say that when we were negotiating teacher contracts, when I got on the school committee, it was the first year we did collaborative bargaining, we were all sitting around a table together, and I would, I'd never wanted to do it another way after that because these are our friends, these are my former teachers, why am they going to sit in one room, we're going to sit in another and act like we don't know each other or like each other? So shaking hands, making the best decisions, disagree, but.
You get some new people who come in and say, well, you obviously don't like the teachers. And it's like, seriously? You mean, my daughter? No, I don't like her. You know, or you don't like the kid.
Your daughter, our wives.
Yeah, you don't like the kid. Wait a minute, we have, I have 4,200 kids in this system as far as I'm concerned. And that's why we all, we have over 4,000 of our kids. They all bleed Milford red. Of course we want. Article five, treasurer borrowing money, I don't think we really ever use it, but it's there just in case we had a tough year. And all of these, the FinCom voted favorable on.
Yep.
Article six, take, giving the Selectmen the right to take.
Take legal action.
Take legal action. So, hey, run the town. We elected you to run the town. Do what we elected you to do.
You got it.
Seven, parking, the parking money.
Yep.
That you can collect it and use it.
Absolutely. And it's funny when we call these reoccurring articles, or, actually, I don't even want to use the word reoccurring today. Last night.
That's inside baseball, Chris.
Sorry, Jerry, I'm going back to housekeeping, just for today. All these housekeeping articles, everybody asks, why do you have to vote on these? It seems so silly. Well, unless we vote on this, that parking money will sit there the entire year and we can't do anything with it, and it will fall to the bottom line. And unless we vote on this at this town meeting, we can't do that stuff. So a lot of people think this is common sense stuff, but.
I think people don't, some of the new people to town don't understand that every dollar, and we get to the 40s, the last articles, you know, it's like, why are you discussing taking back $3.20? Because every dollar that's allocated by town meeting has to be taken back, and only town meeting can allocate money.
That's correct.
You know, the Selectmen have no right to allocate money. FinCom, I mean, I've always said, we're the most influential powerless people in that building because we don't even get to vote.
No, you're absolutely right.
You think about it. The only reason we, it looks like we vote is because we ran for town meeting where there is town meeting members, not as FinCom.
Right.
Because I think all 15 of us get one vote, one out of 200.
Yeah, town meeting has the all-powerful power of the purse, you know.
And it's worked.
And it's worked.
I mean, you know, as hard as it is with 200 people to get them to work in unison, it's great with all the opinions. Because if you look, I wouldn't trade, I mean, I've asked people when they complain about Milford, I say, yeah, Milford's terrible. Tell me one town around you'd trade for.
Right.
You know what I mean? Look around and pick one town that you would trade. Because if you would, why aren't you living there?
Absolutely. But that's why I go back to saying, but that's why our process, regardless of how, you know, muddy we may make it once in a while, it works.
Article eight, again, when Paul Revere was around, we had compensating, basically, if you have to negotiate with the banks, gives you the power too, but luckily, we never have needed that for a long time. Article nine, Chris, insurance money.
Yeah, this basically just says, like, say, someone runs into the police cruiser, okay? We get their insurance company to write us a check. Unless we pass this article, we can't buy another police cruiser until the next town meeting. So what this enables us to do is any insurance proceeds that we receive from anything, we can then immediately go ahead and repurchase whatever we need.
They knock down a light.
Exactly.
Insurance pays us, we can spend the money to put the light back.
Yep.
Article 10, Willie, this is yours.
Yeah, this is just so we can act again on contracts and each department can go and do their own thing, so.
More than a year. And that's important because otherwise.
Well, just like another article with the real estate, allowing you to go to more years. I mean, that's what people are looking for.
And we don't want to be negotiating a three-year contract every year.
And you get better deals generally, longer they, longer they go out.
Article 11.
Yeah, so this article allows the town treasurer to accept deeds and lieu and foreclosure. So if people are, they owe tax to the town, instead of going through the foreclosure process, they can accept the deed.
Because a lot of times when you get these little tiny corner lots, if you have to foreclose and go through the legal issues, the people aren't going to pay the taxes on it, they're long gone. So we just take the deed, we're done, we don't have to spend money on it. Article 12.
Potato chip money.
Potato chip money.
I beat you to it. I know you're, you got your catchphrases, and I know all of them now.
Well, then, tell us about potato chip money.
Yeah, the schools have vending machines, and once again, every dollar needs to be accounted for. What this gives the school committee the ability to do is that any money coming in from those vending machines, school store, all that kind of stuff, allows them to be able to spend that for activities, field trips.
Student activities.
Student activities, yeah, exactly.
Because years ago, the question came up, can I spend it for faculty activities? And the answer is no. It's school activities. We look at revolving accounts.
Yeah, this is very much like the, like Article 12. It's just so revolving accounts can be set up and departments can use them as they need to.
Things like the youth center, where they have expenses, they take in money from the kids and things like the summer camp. If we don't have these revolving accounts, they would have to take in the money, wait a year, come back to town meeting and ask for it again.
Yeah, that's cumbersome.
Yeah. Okay, Article 14, again, favorable. This is a new one, Willie.
This is new. This is part of the Mass, Massachusetts Municipal Modernization Act that the Baker-Polito Administration came out with. And one of them is that if someone's delinquent on taxes, you don't have to wait more than one calendar year of them being delinquent prior to denying them a liquor license.
So if somebody has a liquor license, they're generating revenue and they're just not paying their taxes, you've got.
We have the ability to do it.
A little leverage.
A little leverage. And, you know, we can, again, there's, there's been a small list of folks that have had, I guess, a difficult time paying their taxes and catching up. Some certainly for legitimate reasons, and they're working out payment plans and things like that. So I'm not going to be so quick to just do an automatic denial, at least with my one vote, if this passes, but I certainly would want to know why.
Well, no.
And we need to know that.
Willie, if I'm having a hard time, I've been a good Milford company owner, a good resident, and I'm running into a little tough time. I've never seen the Selectmen say, you are now 31.5 days overdue, we're foreclosing.
Nope. But I think that's important for people to know, because, or at least the town meeting members to know, because we have the ability to, and it may come to acting that way, but it gives us the ability, which is good, because to not have the ability didn't make any sense.
If you're reaching out to me and I'm telling you to go away, well, if I'm not acting in good faith.
Absolutely.
You've got a club.
You got it.
Okay. When we look at this one, speed limit, why don't you talk about that? Because that's going back to Chief Loughlin.
Same, same applicability with the Modernization Act. It's just, give, finally gives towns the ability to lower their speed limits if, where they see fit.
So this means, I don't have to ask.
Remember years ago on Congress Street where they, near the town park where they put 20 mile an hour signs? And then Chief Loughlin had to remove them all because they were technically illegal.
Right.
Because that, by law, is 30 miles an hour and we don't get to take them.
We have to petition for the street, Congress Street, between here and there, and so every place we wanted, we would have to petition. This gives.
And most often, they were denied.
Is that right?
Yes. So, so this at least gives us the ability.
Well, you have to go through Beacon Hill. You have to ask all these state reps, can I make this one road a 20 mile an hour road?
So I'm asking the rep from Western Mass, can I?
Or Boston.
Have Congress Street in front of the playground and hope they understand what it means?
Exactly.
No wonder we never got it through.
And this is just a great example of the Modernization Act and all the things that the Baker-Polito establishment and did to put it back into the town's hands. You should do this yourself. You don't need Boston to handle stuff like this. And that's what a lot of that did and straightened up a lot of stuff, and it really did a lot of good things.
Extremizes the process.
Are you going to call them libertarians if they're shrinking government?
Well, the good news is, they're both former Selectmen, and I think that makes a big difference, you know.
They know the practical.
Exactly, what it means to actually deal with everything that the three of us and, well, I'm sorry, the four of us deal with every day.
So when you look at Article 16, again, speed limit, another one that the FinCom said, really just refer to sponsor.
Again, it's very much like the other article where, you know, the town itself has the ability and the authority, which is more important, to actually say, this is a safety zone, thickly settled, playground, lower the speed limit.
So it's, again, just, hey, let's deal with the fact that Milford knows Milford better than.
And that's really the simple message. I like that.
Yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, I think Milford has proven that it can take care of its citizens better than Beacon Hill, because we know who we are. Help me with 17, another one we referred to sponsor, but when I read it, and by the way, all of these articles, the Selectmen put the articles together, and then jointly, the FinCom will add in background information and the commentary from the FinCom. So when you look at comments that say FinCom, those are FinCom opinions and discussions. Those have nothing to do with the Selectmen, they kind of do, but they, we don't want to blame you for any comments on there. You can go to the town website, especially town meeting members, but even residents, you can go to the town website, look up the exact articles we're talking about, the discussion that was had, the summary, and the votes. And then for any Capitol articles, at least a month before town meeting, we've committed to put the packages on there with the five basic questions that we ask of everybody bringing a money article. You know, why, what isn't you doing, why are you doing it, what actions have you taken, what alternatives, and the background information. You'll see all five. So again, as a resident, we committed to put all that information up, and so far, we've met that commitment. So talk to me about, which one were we on now?
17.
17. I'm totally confused as a resident.
It's for Members-at-Large, right?
Yes.
To make the Finance Director and the Town Administrator Members-at-Large at town meeting. I guess.
Does that mean they're fat? They're large members?
It kind of lines it up with our, how our town government is structured now.
Right.
We had a town accountant, we still have a, technically, a town accountant, but he's the Finance Director and our Town Administrator.
I mean, realistically, we have town meeting members that are elected.
Correct.
We have a number of at-large members, or specific members, like FinCom gets one vote as a group. My mind, this protects, now you're putting at-large to people who really should be voting on these articles.
Absolutely, and that's what was the purpose of this, is they're such important people in our town. I mean, they're in the thick of it, within the Finance Director and the Town Administrator. They should have a say at town meeting and have a vote and join the other at-large members.
So, I mean, that's really all we're saying is, those two people really know what's going on, they're involved, you know, knee-deep in it, they should vote. And that's what this gives you, right?
It does, and it just lines it up with everything else. Now, again, one, that's a whole different, so one could argue that at-large members I find very interesting as well, because you're kind of making it top-heavy towards the establishment.
Well, yeah, you are leaning, it's not quite.
That's what it is.
Like the last election where a third of the vote is at-large members.
Right.
I would have a problem, I know our fine libertarian there would have a problem, if we weighted it that much. But how many at-large members are there? 8%?
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
Not even that.
I don't think it's. Yeah, it's, it's a small, it's a small group. It's just, you know, the first couple of rows and, you know, but these are people that are involved, and, you know, you do have your Chairman of each of the committees that serve.
I just don't want people thinking it's 30% of the vote is already weighted.
Town meeting is 240?
I think it's 240.
Okay. And again, that was refer to sponsor.
Yeah.
Because we didn't see as FinCom where that's within our realm to review.
And again, it just lines it up with how everyone else.
That's what we've been doing. Article 18, Middle School East.
This just allows the Board of Selectmen, since the town is going to own it as of July 1.
Yep.
I don't know if you want to give the history, Chris, but the, obviously, the school system is burning.
The town always owned it, it's just the Selectmen.
They did, but the Board of Selectmen didn't have the authority.
Right.
To do anything with that building. Once the school department finally illegally named it surplus, we can now put an RFP out and see what people would like to do.
So if you can generate some money, this gives you the ability to generate it, collect it.
At least come up with options to say someone wants to buy it, they want to do this, they have the plan, we can, we can design the RFP however, however we'd like and say, you know, I don't want to just hear necessarily someone coming in and knocking it down, maybe certain people, you know, explain what you want to do with it, you know, what you want to change it into.
But realistically, you can't, you really can't sell it, whatever, without going back to town meeting.
No.
So there's a failsafe in there.
Oh, big time.
You can rent it, you know, you can use it, but fundamentally.
This is just the first step of the process. Well, I guess the first step is, the school committee officially declared it surplus effective of June of this year, now that they no longer need that school building. And this is the next step of the process, is to go out and get those RFPs and.
And the FinCom went favorable.
Because it would have a beneficial financial impact on the town if we did do any renting, selling, that type of stuff.
Yeah, now, Article 19, this is a new one, had some debate, but I think it was almost unanimous that we talked about, we want to bring good new businesses into Milford.
Yes.
And that's.
Yep, Selectmen Buckley brought this up some time ago. I know from our board, you know, we discussed it at length, and we're just, just like at our last meeting, we're really concentrating on seeing who we can bring here. We're obviously even a TIF-friendly town, the tax incremental financing. We want, we want people to continue to come here, we have a great business base, and we do have the dual tax rate, and, you know, that can be seen as a, as a negative for someone coming in, but then they see what we can also work with and offer.
People look at TIFs and they say, oh, you're giving away tax money. And I don't think a lot of people understand.
Yeah.
That in Milford, like, I think it was Clark or whatever, when they left, they said, see, you gave them a TIF, and they were only here two years, they left. And I looked, I said, but wait a minute, they didn't take the building.
Yeah, the building stays.
I have no problems with you handing out TIFs for people building new buildings, because by definition, you're increasing the tax base.
Absolutely. And they're never not paying taxes.
Right.
That's correct.
And if they do leave, and the building, the building's still there, and now the TIF dissolves.
It's a transfer.
It doesn't transfer, so now, now you're paying the full tax on that brand new building.
It's like the warranty on your car. If you sell the car a year in, if you had a three-year warranty that you paid for extra, that's nice.
You got it.
Yeah, if company gets to keep the money, they don't have to honor the warranty to Chris.
Yep.
Okay. And what we're doing there is putting a pretty small amount, 18 grand, to get some consultants in here and figure out, what can we do?
Yep.
And like you say, that dual tax rate with the businesses, as a homeowner, there's a reason Milford's average is only 4,900.
Absolutely. Absolutely. No, and that, that makes all the difference in the world.
And it is an obstacle in getting businesses to come here, because they do look at that and say, whoa, you know, with the one-point-six, like, do I really want to, you know?
Well, you know, you think about it. Paul Abadanza once told us, when he did his little study, that for every dollar we collect in residential taxes, costs us a buck eighty. And that makes sense, because one child is ten grand a year. So if you've got two kids in the system, right there alone, you've got twenty thousand a year, but you're only paying five grand.
Yep.
What saves us is that, I think it was eighteen cents on the dollar for commercial. I mean, if you think of Moren Studio, you're paying one-point-five times the rate, yet there's no kids in Moren Studio.
No trash pickup, no leave, pick-up, all that stuff.
So, take eighty percent of our expenses, and we don't give them to you.
Yep.
And I think industrial was like sixteen cents on the dollar. So, you know, my hat's off to Bill Buckley, when he was chair, saying, we ought to do this, because if we can bring in new business, that just makes Milford more attractive, healthier, and lowers the rate that we're charging residents. Okay, Article twenty.
So, this would give the tax collector and the town treasurer a thousand-dollar annual stipend if they become certified by the state and go through the program. This is an incentive to make sure that...
They stay current, they stay educated.
Exactly. To ensure that they are proficient at their jobs, and they have all the latest and greatest, you know, tools and techniques.
You start thinking about how much money they're managing, and the decisions they make. I want somebody who knows the latest and greatest tools and information. And if it costs me, what'd you say, twenty grand?
No, it's one-thousand, one-thousand per...
It's not twenty, fifty, a hundred thousand, it's a couple grand.
Yeah, you're looking at two grand a year if they both become certified.
Right. So, two grand to the guy managing an eighty...
So for the next twenty years, it might, you know, cost...
Yeah, for the next twenty years, think of how many hundreds of millions of dollars he'll be managing.
Absolutely.
Okay, twenty-one.
Mr. Shaw's.
Captain Chicken, it's all yours.
So, what the residents should know is that you can get any article sponsored at town meeting by simply collecting ten signatures. So, I took the time and I consulted with town council to draft a bylaw amendment, and went out and collected signatures in support of it. And basically, this amendment, oh, actually...
We're on twenty-one.
Twenty-one, excuse me, this is the planning board amendment. This would prohibit residential animals in the RA zone. Residential animals being anything other than three cats and three dogs.
So that one we referred to sponsor.
And the FinCom referred to our sponsor on that one.
Now we roll into Article twenty-two.
Article twenty-two, this is, this is the article that I sponsored, that would redefine what is considered residential animals. So, actually, Article twenty-one and Article twenty-two can both be passed and coexist, because Article twenty-two redefines what is a residential animal, and it would exempt already existing three dogs, three cats, but in addition to that, up to four hens. The, I know that urban flocks have become, you know, a growing trend among families...
But this is four chickens, this is not a flock.
Four hens. So, the major complaints, when people think, oh, I don't want to live, I don't want chickens in my community, it's noise, so we don't allow roosters.
And chicken poop?
Smell, so we only limit it to four. And by the way, four chickens would produce far less fecal matter than three dogs, let me tell you. And...
Well, I guarantee less than my son-in-law's English mouse.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So, it was carefully drafted with those two main complaints in mind, and it allows people to get all the benefits from having a small backyard flock.
My God, Chris.
Without this special permit, which it would cost you three-twenty-five to apply, with no guarantee that you'll get it, and then fifty dollars to register with the land deeds, and to have, to purchase the permission is three-seventy-five.
So if I want, it's going to cost me a hundred dollars a chicken?
It'll cost you, you can buy four chickens for twenty dollars, but it would cost you three-seventy-five for the permission.
But then I pay four-hundred dollars to get the right to buy the four chickens.
Correct. So, this kind of, we were talking about streamlining earlier, this would streamline a very small number, you know, this is more about being a part of the community.
Why do people want chickens?
There's a lot of reasons, and I have a whole list of reasons. I mean, you get fresh eggs, you get organic compost, you, it's free pest control, because they love lawn grubs and ticks and all sorts of pests.
Now, residential animal, you know, my dog.
Yes.
Not allowed to run free and cause havoc in the community.
Right.
Wouldn't the hens or chickens be under the same restrictions?
So, this bylaw doesn't address that, and in retrospect, maybe it should have. Dogs have a leash law under statute, cats don't. Cats roam free.
Oh, okay.
But any...
No leash law for chickens?
So, but any smart, any smart and responsible chicken owner would want to build a coop or purchase a coop to protect their livestock, because everything, you know, any live animal, wild animal wants to eat a chicken. Hawks, coyotes, foxes.
Oh, okay.
So, even raccoons, raccoons, opossums.
Again, the essence of this is four.
Four.
Just like somebody who has three cats, you wouldn't make fun of them.
In the small little coop in your backyard, it should be a nuisance to no one, really.
And the FinCom voted, refer to sponsor.
Refer to sponsor.
Because we didn't see it.
Financial impact.
Article twenty-three, drawings, one-hundred-twenty-five thousand.
As we get closer and closer to the TIP project at the, on Route sixteen and Route one-forty, it's more area than that, it's from Water Street up, but I always refer to the sixteen, one-forty, because that is the big spot in which this project's going to be done. We've even started preparing for it even at our last town meeting, in which we did some land acquisitions. But that's coming up in 2018, and what we need to do is, we need to do our part with the engineering. That's what this one-hundred-twenty-five does, is to get the engineering along Route sixteen and over the sixteen and one-forty interchange, the design of the turn lanes, all that type of stuff.
And the real confusing part of this to a lot of people is, when we put in fifty grand to do fifty percent of the drawings, they say, well, now you only have the little bit left, why a hundred-twenty-five percent? The way the articles read is the number of drawings. So if there's a hundred drawings, and you say, I need fifty bucks to do the first fifty, those can be little tiny drawings, but it's check, check, fifty of them. The last ten drawings could cost you two-hundred dollars, because those are the intense, large, detailed drawings. So I know a lot of people have come up and say, wait a minute, we paid fifty bucks to do fifty drawings, now you want two-hundred dollars to do the last twenty? It doesn't make any sense. So this does not explain the complexity or the work. This just says, takes a hundred drawings, it's the last number.
And this is a great project for Milford, and Scott Christopher's done a great job. Keep us in the loop on this project and staying up with all the paperwork and all that kind of stuff that the state requires in order to get this done.
So now Article twenty-four. This is the one, I'll put you on the spot publicly again. You had committed, this is the one about buying the water company, so this is going to put money into consulting and what you need.
Yes.
But you had committed with Buck, that you would not bring the dang article forward till you finished your due diligence.
Yes.
Because everybody's saying, they're going to bring it in March, they're going to bring it in June.
Right. And all this article does is not just, because it's a big money article, it's four-hundred thousand dollars, it's a lot of money, but it allows us to keep going and to keep digging and to do our due diligence and to keep getting answers to the questions that we have.
You're still committed that you will not bring it forward till you've done full due diligence.
Yes.
Regardless of how long it takes.
Yes.
That's what I want to hear.
And that's what, and that's the path that all three of us are on.
And sixty-one million dollars, none of us want to hear you're going to rush it.
Nope. Bill, Mike, and myself are all on board with that.
We're going to get Mike, because you and Bill have committed twice publicly, but Mike wasn't on the hook yet. Okay, Article twenty-five, discontinue public way.
Yep, this is the area behind Milford National Bank.
Six inches and...
Six inches, yeah.
It's this much, because the bank was always good citizens and let the police cruisers park there at no charge?
Yes.
So now we have, I mean, we laugh about town meeting having to approve every dollar? Every inch? But all this does is kind of say, okay, we're accepting this much, so the police can continue to use.
Absolutely, and it just cleans the title. That's pretty much what the issue is.
Okay, Bron, Article twenty-six, bronze markers at the cemetery.
Absolutely, and this is something that doesn't cost the town even a penny. What this does is, it's, there's a three-thousand-dollar repair that the Vernon Road Cemetery needs to do, but we need to pay the three thousand, and then the three thousand is transferred back from the perpetual fund that they have. So it costs, it doesn't cost the town a cent, but we simply need to fund the three thousand.
We have to front the money, then get it back.
And then the perpetual fund gives us the three thousand dollars back.
Article twenty-seven, Middle School East.
So this is to continue to maintain Middle School East. Now that the school is going to surplus it, the town has to pick up the cost to maintain it. Now, last year, the school spent about a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars maintaining it, but that was, they were still partially using parts of the building, the gymnasium and the cafeteria, and they'd have certain events there. Over the next year, we don't expect to use it, so therefore, we expect the maintenance cost to be somewhat lower than what it was last year.
I'm glad you're saying somewhat, because if you really believe they're not going to use the gym...
Yeah. We don't know what that, you know, no more than one-thirty-five.
And after last night's debate and listening to what the schools told us, it actually cost them, to be honest with you, I think there might be a change at this number at town meeting. I think it might be...
Well, I mean, we're debating whether it's eighty or...
I agree.
And we had said, put in a hundred-thirty-five just in case. I've got no problem supporting, like I did last night, a hundred-thirty-five, because you're not going to spend it.
Yeah.
It's not like, hey, we've got fifty grand left over, let's go buy some carpets.
If something happens to that building in the next year while vacant, which is...
It's possible.
Possible. At least it'll be, it'll hopefully be funded.
Article twenty-eight, veterans exemptions.
One of the big things this does is, this reduces the amount of time that veterans have to wait if they move into town, in order to be able to get the tax...
Exemption.
Exemption. The other thing that it does is that, never before would we be able to give exemptions to properties that were in trusts. And I had brought up with the assessor, it's a big thing now. Nowadays, people are, you know, using trusts more...
Well, to protect their own assets.
Exactly. So as it becomes more and more prevalent in the community, this addresses the ability for those veterans who have their homes in a trust to be able to still get that exemption.
And again, this to me is Milford.
Yep.
Because you're looking, saying, here's a group of people who put their lives on the line for us, and because of some legal mumbo jumbo...
Exactly.
We're not going to be able to take care of them. And this says, hey, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Do we want to take care of our vets? Yes. Paper it, so we can.
You got it.
Yeah. And obviously, the FinCom supported that one. Twenty-nine, revolving funds.
Yeah, this is to have a revolving account for our rental properties. Right now, and we own a number of, a small number of buildings, but whatever rent paid goes into the general fund, and the revolving fund should be set up so that we can do our routine maintenance and things of that nature.
And Michael, number thirty, another one you put up.
Yes, this is another article that I sponsored, again, collecting signatures. This is relation to the signed bylaw that we passed last year. Last year, we passed a bylaw that prohibited temporary signs that don't relate to a one-time event. And...
Yeah, so my yard is technically illegal right now.
Yeah, so, so signs like, we support the Milford Police.
I have a sign, I'm proud of it, that says, we support the Milford Police.
Those signs are technically illegal under this new bylaw. So, this is a very small change to the bylaw. It still has the limit-one sign, you know, because we don't want too much sign clutter, but it allows you to have a sign that is not related to a one-time event.
And I wish the camera had gotten Chief Olafland's face when I said, I do want to know what police officer is going to come to my home and arrest me for having a sign in my yard that says, I support the police.
Right. But there's a lot of signs, you know, I see, I drive by signs, they don't even look like signs, they're like the portable, they look like a little small child, and it says, caution, drive like your kids live here.
Live here.
That sign is technically illegal. So, I mean, I think it's a huge oversight we had last year, and I hope to correct it for this article.
This should clean, because candidly, you know, you laughed when I said, I think that pesky First Amendment would get in the way of you telling me, I can't say I'm proud of Milford Police. Or, hey, be careful, I have a deaf child, or I have children here.
Yep.
Okay. We roll into Article thirty-one. This is confusing everybody in Milford.
What it is, is every time you look at your cable bill, or if you have it bundled with your phone, you'll notice all those fees at the bottom of your bill.
For the studio.
That's exactly right. So what that is, is that it's money collected by Comcast, Verizon, and it is then redistributed to the town for things, like you say, like this studio up at the school, who that, this is actually the proponent of this article, is they have a studio up there as well, they have their own video unit, and this allows them to take those funds and be able to spend them.
And the reason it's confusing is, this law article that was taken up at the state level was because, okay, we bring in six percent, say, three-hundred thousand a year, that these viewers of Comcast and Verizon pay. The selectmen have been square shooters and say, it's not our money, it's a buck ninety on your bill, it should go to support local cable, because that's why we're collecting it. Other towns have been less-than-straight shooters, and they've said, yeah...
They've done the money grab.
Yeah, they've done the money grab.
Yeah.
I need a hundred grand, so we'll give two-hundred of the three-hundred. So, you know, it's strange, because people are saying, have you been grabbing money from the studios?
Yeah.
It's like, no. But this just makes it very clear that the state is now doing what Milford has always done, saying, you got, you really should. If I'm a subscriber of Comcast or Verizon, I give you two bucks for local cable, it should go to local cable.
Absolutely.
And again, FinCom was favorable. Stabilization account, Article thirty-two.
The school department was looking to set up a stabilization account for any excess special education funds that remained at the end of the year. What this would do is, would create that fund, and then at the end of any year in which they had excess funds, it would give them the ability to move that in there. And what their thought process is, is that we can fund this with extra funds, because say, someone moves out of the district in the middle of the year, we had excess funds for whatever reason, we can throw it in this little kitty over here. And then a year where someone moves in in the middle of the year, like, this year, we had four kids come in after April first, where the budget has already been established, and it was costing them, I believe, it was a huge, something like six-hundred thousand?
Yeah, four, five hundred thousand.
It's like a hundred, it's a hundred, even circuit breaker, at the end of the day, a typical student at Milford High may cost ten, twelve.
Yep.
A special needs student may cost a hundred-thirty, a hundred forty.
That's why, I think it was four, and I think it was about a hundred-and-fifty a piece, it was about six-hundred thousand. So this stabilization account, he would be able to make transfers out of that and help fund themselves on years that they're short on special ed money.
So just like Snow and Ice, I mean, a few years ago, there was a snafu in their budget, and if you remember, there was a few hundred thousand dollars that got dropped to free cash, because they couldn't park it. This will give them a little bit of a cushion for those years. Article thirty-three, liquor license.
Yes.
Is this the old Truffles?
This is the old Truffles, and the, an owner of a restaurant that's going to be leasing that building, so it obviously won't be vacant for too much longer. We'll petition, if passed, we can petition the state legislature for additional liquor license, which we've done many, many times, and it's specific to that property. But this is where I think our, in the interest of commerce and business and being friendly, Milford has always gone over and above to get the additional liquor licenses.
Number thirty-four, where do I put my marijuana stores?
Yeah, so this article will establish areas where retail marijuana can be sold. So, currently, the, the bylaw allows for medicinal marijuana in the...
This just deals with recreational.
Right. So, but just to give you a little bit of back information, we currently have medicinal allowed in the industrial zones only. What this would allow is, is for recreational to be in the industrial zone, and then have the retail part of that in the commercial C district by, by right, and then in the commercial B district by special permit.
If you sit there and say, not downtown...
Not downtown.
But areas close to downtown, get a special permit, and you can put a store there. And there's going to be debate. There's going to be some fun debate as to, well, we don't really want those kind of stores, but wait a minute, the residents of Massachusetts already said yes.
Right. So, so there's a little bit of debate whether, if we don't pass this, is it allowed everywhere, or is it allowed nowhere? And I think that's, there's been a little bit of disagreement about where the law actually allows.
There's some legitimate saying, we don't have enough parking downtown, we don't want a high volume, I wonder if it is high volume, but we, you know, the theory is, we don't want a high-volume retail establishment, that, no matter where you put it, the customers who want to go there, they'll drive the extra mile.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think regardless of how this article specifically goes, the board of selectmen just voted unanimously to go, to have a special election in the fall, no later than September thirtieth, to have a referendum, so that people in the town of Milford can actually decide. That was part of the question on the statewide referendum. So, we'll be able to get a clear answer on whether folks want marijuana sold.
And I was really happy, and that the selectmen did this, and I think they did a great job with it, that it was like casinos. Casinos passed in the state, but everyone said, I don't want it in my town. You know, casinos, prisons, everything else.
Let the residents decide.
Yep.
Now, Article thirty-five, when the chief explained, right now, he has to hire off the civil service list.
Yes.
And that doesn't work in the benefit of Milford. You know, people say, oh, that gives him the right to pick his friends. Well, not really. It really gives him the right to not have to pick the top three testers... It really gives him the right to not have to pick the top three testers. And he brought up an example that if you have a cop that's already been trained, that's 26 weeks of salary, plus the cost, it was like 150 or 200 grand per police officer.
Oh, significant savings.
That we can just forego. On top of that, he made some compelling arguments to why you want preference to local residents because they tend, if you're from Milford, you tend to stay in Milford, so you don't have the turnaround.
Absolutely. And they did some, you know, negotiations with the chief, with the union, with the Board of Selectment, and everyone, you know, made concessions and.
And the rights they have, if I was a police officer hired under civil service, I'm not giving up any rights.
No, that stays with you as long as you stay in that kind of position.
Right, so the new people.
New people coming on, or civil service officers going for promotions, because he'll have, the chief will have to set up his own testing criteria, interview.
Well, that was the other thing, I was amazed when he said, they do the civil service testing, and I get results six months later. So we're paying overtime to fill a slot that we've budgeted. It just seems like a logical thing, and we support it as FinCom.
Yeah, and because we felt it had such a financial impact negatively, that we, if we didn't do this, that we gave it a favorable recommendation.
Water commissioners.
Yes.
The next article, people are saying, does that mean you're going to set up a board and we have to buy the water company?
No. What it does give us the authority to do is to appoint water commissioners. Right now, the legislation and the statute, which goes way back, says, until a special election, or, I'm sorry, until an election can be held, the Board of Selectmen, the three members automatically become the water commissioners. The one thing that the three of us do not want to do is become the water commissioners. Not because we're lazy, not because we don't want the responsibility, but we believe that the responsibility, once we get that water company, we should have three people that are spending 100% of whatever time they have to learning the business, learning the staff.
Yeah, I don't want you to do your part-time job part-time.
Exactly. No, and we just really want to, and I hope we can make that point well enough to the membership.
I think, Willie, the point that was made to me was, this allows us to be ready, so if the town decides to buy the water company, we can move right away. We don't have to wait another six months to a year.
Three months, six months, whenever, whenever that happens, if it happens, exactly what you said, these people can hit the, hit the round running.
You can put a management team in right away, because the worst thing, again, not taking anything away from the three selectmen, but I don't want to wait six months and have you trying to fit it in.
Absolutely. No, it's too important. If it does happen, it's too important.
And another thing I want to emphasize, this is, this is a stopgap for the period in time before an election. This is going to be an elective position if it does.
So you're going to appoint three people to get us going, then we're going to have a real election.
Just like the sewer commissioners, one will have a three-year seat, one will, a two-year seat, one will win a one-year seat, and then.
And that's worked out, I mean.
And then from there, they're in the cycle.
Article 37, Chromebooks.
The schools were looking to make a significant capital purchase of some Chromebooks. They're looking either for a partial or a full amount. The full amount would be to fund Chromebooks in the amount of 590,000 for grades 6 through 12. What they're seeing is, is that we built this big, beautiful, shiny woodland school with a Chromebook for everyone, and if a fifth grader graduates.
And it works.
And moves to Stacy, all of a sudden, they're back to a pen and pencil again. And we, you know, we really thought that that could be a hindrance to, oh, the school department, excuse me, I don't say we, the school department really thought that that would be a hindrance to the children's education, and this would, with all the infrastructure improvements that we've made in all our schools in the past couple of years with network improvement, wireless, all that type of stuff, that the schools were finally ready for this big step.
And the schools were really concerned that the sixth graders, so the kids coming out of.
Woodland.
Woodland, would not get handed stone tablets compared to the Chromebooks.
Try not to go backwards.
Try not to go backwards.
Exactly.
And I mean, they had offered the compromise that we do half of the books, and it was our own member, Mark Shane, that said, wait a minute, if you're in for a penny, you're in for a pound, let's do the whole program. He's the one that pushed through, saying, do it all through the high school in one year, let's get everybody up. So.
And I do wish that, you know, that was awfully gracious of Mark, but I kind of wish, and I'm interested in your feedback, Chris.
But, and I hope they still.
I would like to think that they would phase it because we're.
They're going to do it as they can bring it in efficiently.
But it would be, it would be really, I think, a good thing if they only asked for half to get the 6 through 9, only because we're going down, I mean, you'll know better than I do, the amount of free cash. I think that's important to touch on that.
The other thing, the agreement was, was that these books were budgeted for October.
Yes.
So the school committee gave up all their other capital, except the playground they're carrying from last year.
Yes.
So that this money, it's a matter of moving it forward. We're not really adding any extra money.
Right. I think it's a cash flow issue.
But you're spending it in a different budget cycle, too.
Now, we're going to have to run a little quick. Article 38, we have sick leave buyback.
Some of our more experienced folks, whether it's policeman, fireman, they're grandfathered, that's been cut in half, but we still have to pay for what they were contractually obligated to do.
There you go. We've got rescinding debt. I mean, when we look at 39.
We're saving a lot of money by paying it off early.
Bingo, we got the cash, let's not spend it, let's pull back the loans.
You got it.
When we look at Article 40.
Same thing, that's callable.
Yeah.
And we're paying that, I mean, 39 was, we got the money from FEMA.
We got the money from FEMA, we take it. People should know, we're only calling the bonds that have no penalty that work in our favor.
Absolutely.
Because it doesn't make any sense to be paying the old high-interest rates. 41, zoning.
It gives the ability, it gives the ability to have municipal buildings have solar panels on and without site plan approval. It just speeds up the process, and solar is something we're very much in favor of.
And only on the roof. That's what the good Dr. Cannelli brought out to say, you don't have to come to us every single roof, but by the way.
It's a sure roof.
You're not taking up parking places, or you're not making solar farms without coming to us as a planning board. So that made sense. 42.
Snow and ice, which was in the amount of 374,000 this year. We always have to clear this off the books, we're legally required to do it, so we're paying it off.
We got to pay it, we spent it, we got to pay it. It's the one that we can carry over.
It's the only budget that we can go into deficit because of the obvious safety concern.
Now, 43, this is the one where the town meeting giveth and only the town meeting can taketh away. So if we gave you $100 to do a project, and you've got, I mean, some of these years, it's always funny. $2.20 and.
Police heater control, $30.
Right.
Assessment study, $800.
So this is just cleaning up projects that were done. But when you add up all the peanuts, it's a hundred grand.
170,000.
Almost $20,000, yeah.
I mean, because some of them were as high as $50,000.
Yeah, oh, no, there was some significant ones.
And then the last one, you have to run a balanced budget, so a lot of, you know, departments, not a lot, but a few departments, went over in expenses, so they didn't spend as much in people, or went over a little bit in people, and it's just moving money within the departments to make sure they balance their budget.
As you mentioned, every dollar has to be accounted for. Some of these are $70.
That's it, that's this year's town meeting.
Should be a fun one.
Should be a fun one. And I can't, this year, again, I can't figure out which article that means nothing, really, is going to take up the hour of time.
I have a funny feeling that the gentleman to my left is going to spend a lot of time at the podium on that night.
So maybe the chickens will be the hot article for this year.
I hope not, I hope that one goes through.
Well, I hope people listen to you, and you present it, and some of us are going to support you.
Absolutely.